Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the Northfin City Council Regular Session Agenda, Council Meeting for Tuesday, March 22nd at 7:00 PM here in the Council Chambers. We're going to go ahead and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, can you help me? Madden Robertson and who's at the Eagle Scout? And Chris Foltz, World Ice Champion, join me and lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Wonderful, and thank you. Welcome, everybody, and happy spring. We're so glad that you're here. As I mentioned and asked two of the honorees in the audience to join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have some ceremonial items to go over this evening. So the first that we have is we have recognition of an Eagle Scout Award with Madden Robertson. And so, Mr. City Administrator, did you have some information for us on this one here?
Ryan.
Yes.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Last spring, we were approached by Madden about doing an Eagle Scout project. And of course, I was very excited about it. At the parks, we don't turn down a lot of volunteer work. And he'll be the fourth Eagle Scout project we've had at the parks. So I'm not, you're not here to hear me, you're here to hear Madden. I'm going to have him explain a couple of things about his Eagle project.
Hi, as you heard, I'm Madden Robertson and recently earned my Eagle Scout Award. I've been in scouting for about eight years, almost. And yeah, I've been working for, to Eagle Scout for a while, done through earning different merit badges, earning different ranks, helping out my troop, helping me out. And I finally got to the final step of getting my Eagle Scout project done this last, I started planning with Brian this last spring. I got started on it a little bit later than I'd expected and finished a little later than expected, but it ended up getting done. I think early August started raising money. I did a car wash in August that raised most of the money at Amquap Bank. And then started the actual project late August. And got it, worked most of the weekends up until mid-October. And sorry, so the actual project, what it is, is a picnic area that I, myself and a scout leader of mine, and Mr. Sebby, had built some of these two benches. And also using a table that was donated from the city. And put that down after we laid out mulch and some of the, there's some other parts of the project that were donated by the city, like the wall and the rocks. And so we landscaped the area, laid out all the mulch. Once all the, the table was prepped, you know, painted, all stained. And once the benches were built, we cemented them into the ground. And yeah, that's, that's, that's what we did and we're going to finish up the project.
I do have to say that I don't see the prior picture on here, but that whole bank was nothing but brush and a lot of stuff. There we go. And so they did a lot of clearing and made it more beautiful. And I'll tell you, these Eagle Scout guys and his troop are very tough people. They got into bee's nest twice. And they were swarming around them, but they had lunch and they went back to work. So very impressed. And Madden's been a joy to work with. I'm very proud of him. He, he, he was constantly calling me, texting me about information. And to me, that's important, that I have some knowledge that I'd love to pass down to these younger people. So he did a great job and it'll be there forever. And I noticed that it gets used a lot. People like to sit up there. If you go up there and sit, it's a great view of the park. So try it out sometime. Do you have any questions for Madden?
Looks great.
Yeah, it does.
This is amazing. So when you finish this project, so you get a, you get another badge, right?
Right. Right now I have my Life Scout patch on, but once in the next month or so, I'm going to have a Court of Honor. And that's when I'll be officially recognized and my troop has gotten the Eagle Scout. And then all, yeah, I'll have the Eagle Scout patch.
That's amazing. Well, congratulations on that. We're very proud of you. Would you honor the council to have a picture with you?
Sure.
All right. I won't ask you to do a TikTok, but I mean, could go there if you want.
Madden's also part of Chief Partner. He is one of our lifers. I've had the pleasure of knowing him for the past six years and he's been a great part of our whole family. So I'm super proud of him today.
Card worker all around. So great. Well, congratulations. We have other ceremonial items we can take care of after. We have a photo with him. Congratulations.
Come in here. Just also a graduation to your end.
Let me get over there.
Get a balance with that. You won't beat it?
Absolutely.
I would have pulled my hair or something.
You don't like the monitor?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's something you don't.
All right, ready? Here we go. Right. Big smile, big smile, big smile.
You actually tell her smiling, don't you?
I know. That's why I take a second. It's like, my God, no hat. It's like. All right, thank you.
Congratulations. We look forward to seeing what you do next. Yes. And you're more than welcome to stay and learn all about city government if you want. But if you have great plans to attend to, that's okay.
Madden Mayor.
So, yes.
Before you start, I think a personal.
Yes, yes.
And endorse the council. So for those not aware, this is Brian Owen's last meeting and he was going to leave very quietly out the door. And so I'm going on vacation starting Thursday morning. And so I'm not going to be here for Brian's last day. He tried to plan two weeks of vacation to coincide so he could just very quietly. And we're going to honor his wishes. No fanfare, no reparty, no going away, no plaques, no nothing. Except. I, I, I personally wanted to say thank you. Because when I got here as City Administrator, you come around because the camera likes to see your hair off your head. Brian always insists, he always tells folks, the reason he stayed on a little longer is so that he could afford his hair transplant. And so when I got here in October 2020, Brian was planning on retiring. And it took me two months to convince him to stay. And so here we are in March of 2022, and he's still here. And I tried to get him for even longer, but he won't do it. And so I just personally, you know, want the council to be able to take a photo with you. Because right now, for what you know, is Buddy Young had retired from the police department. He was our longest tenured employee. Brian's in third, but see, when Buddy retired, it moved him up to the second most tenured employee. And we're not talking age, we're talking tenure. That's how many years he's been here. How many years have you been here? Thirty-six. Thirty-six years, okay. How old are you? So you see what I'm saying? So I, I, I had to at least do something for you. And it's not a plaque, but it's, it's an opportunity for you in your retirement. And if you know Brian, and for those watching on phone, you're going to understand this. And so just stay right there. Don't, don't, don't look at me. Don't peek. Don't peek. Don't peek. Don't peek, because I'm going to throw this around here. Here we go. Here we go. Here we go. All right. All right.
It's perfect. To go with my Dairy Queen flag that I have lying.
Exactly. So for those that don't know, Brian pretty much eats three squares a day at Dairy Queen. And so I did confirm they are hiring. And so you've got the best now. And so I'd like the council to come down and take a photo. But Brian, I'm going to miss you.
I miss you too.
On the staff, I really am.
Hey, you don't bring your treats back, do you? You suck it up pretty big time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Celebration, that sounds just like you. Yeah, yeah, good.
All right, so you can adjust a little. It's a little awful. There you go. You know, they'll help you out there. Exactly. Dilly-dilly.
I think this is worse than a plaque. This is like more embarrassing.
I wore this form of a plaque.
All right, in a little closer, there you go. All right, a little closer than that. There you go. All right, ready? Oh, that's beautiful. That's just priceless. In fact, I'm going to use this to submit your application online to Dairy Queen. And so that you have an opportunity of retirement. I don't know how to run. Thank you. Hey, do you want Ralph to take a picture with you in here too?
Yeah, I think that would be a periphatic.
You know how to run that?
I'll give you a discount.
I, I posted this on social media once. I was in a city managing, and they're getting a Dairy Queen. And I posted a weather alert Blizzard forecast for Billericup. And so come and squeeze in here, so. And I deliberately got a haircut just so that you had more hair than I get. Have to get some transplant stuff. All right.
Congratulations, Brian. You will be missed.
Be cute to go live in just a second.
We'll do the proper thing down.
Thanks, Brad.
That's like one in all the opportunity. I do it.
Just some time for someone.
All right, you're live.
Okay, and I think the sound will pick me up down here, correct? And so the next order of business is we have a City of Northfin, Oregon proclamation for Chris Foltz. Chris, if you could join us up here with the council. We'll have you standing next to our council president, Phil Richardson. All right, so City of Northfin, Oregon proclamation. Whereas the City of Northfin is proud of its residents and their accomplishments. And whereas Chef Chris Foltz, an international award-winning ice falter and his teammates took first place in the multi-block competition at the 2022 World Ice Art Champions in Fairbanks, Alaska. And whereas Chef Foltz and his team are wonderful examples of the caliber of students and staff at Southwestern Oregon Community College and the Oregon Coast Culinary Institute. And whereas the City Council enthusiastically applauds the determination and the success of Chef Chris Foltz and his team. Now, therefore, I, Jessica Eaglekey, Mayor of the City of Northfin, in recognition of the aforementioned outstanding accomplishments do hereby, on behalf of the citizens of Northfin, Oregon, extend congratulations and encouragement to you. Chef Chris Foltz and team, and urge all citizens of Northfin to recognize your achievements and the distinction they bring to our community and encourage all citizens to applaud and celebrate this success. And witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and have caused the seal of the City of Northfin, Oregon, to be affixed this 22nd day of March 2022. Congratulations. This is a wonderful opportunity to recognize Chef Foltz's gallery of work. And if you're not aware, he has had many accomplishments and has made our entire community and Southwest Oregon Community College and the Culinary Institute very proud. We are so happy that you are such a great example and show off our community. So we're very proud of you. Is there anything that you would like to say? I know you have your family here and you have teammates that may be watching.
Just, just, I really enjoy living here in Northfin and I love the support of the community and always trying to, trying to do something great out there, you know, and working with the school. And the students is always awesome and just a great place to, great place to live. So I love to travel, but it's always awesome to come home. Thank you.
You're welcome. And if you want to follow your work, it's the best place to look is on Instagram.
Yeah, just Instagram or social media, you know, just go to my name and it's pretty simple. Or check out, you know, usually we're doing postings through OCCI for the ice carving and stuff like that, so. You know, a lot of cool stuff.
The item that you won on, it was a large animal.
Yeah, it was an elephant.
Right there. Okay, so yeah. How many hours did that take you?
It was a, it was five days with four, four man team. Yeah, and we don't really have a time limit, so we just work as much as we can, you know, try to, try to rest in between.
Okay, amazing. I'm going to put you on the spot here for a second. If we are able to work through the details of a ice skating rink next holiday season, can we count on you? Yeah.
Absolutely.
We'd love to have a partnership.
We could do, we could do some cool stuff. That'd be awesome.
Okay, you heard it here first.
That's awesome. Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Congratulations. And maybe his family would like to come up for a photo too. Oh, yeah, sure. All right. Come on in. Put you guys over here.
I don't think you're that wide of an aim. Oh, yes, I am. Come on in. Yes, I am. Yes. No, no, no. In fact, if you, see, back up just a little and then you move your shoulder just in. See, there you go. And then you do the same. There you go. There you go. Ready? All right. One, two, three, here we go. Excellent. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Wonder if a little bit of his heart breaks when it's completely melted and gone, right? So let's go ahead and we did have another proclamation that we're going to go ahead and move to another meeting for the Southwest Oregon Community College swim team. So I'm going to go ahead and strike that from the agenda and we'll move that to a time that they can participate. And then that takes us to the consent calendar. I also do want to note that we have Counselor Garboden online and we do have Counselor Lee Sin absent. So the consent calendar, and we have all the information here on the packet, page one. You went over the information in the work session last night that I was able to watch, by the way. I did not have any questions. So is there a motion for number three?
I move that we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Okay, I heard a first from Counselor Gall and a second from Counselor Slater. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent calendar as presented, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next item of business, we have number four, which is public comment. And I believe we have one information to, one, some information to read, comments to read. And none online, is that correct? Okay. My microphone closer. We do want to thank our public for participating in public comments tonight, this evening. And as always, public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. So that three minutes is consistent with who is in the room, not in the room, we're in Zoom. It's three minutes period. Our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in order to comply with open Oregon open meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our City Administrator and reporter are taking notes if any action is needed. I have the written public comment right here. Okay, the public comment that is submitted to be written into the record tonight is from Julia Kloboltz. Is that, did I pronounce that correctly? And I will go ahead and start reading this now. The public comment is regarding unethical collection of property tax for city operations expenses. And this is requested action. Have you previously addressed the City Council on this agenda item or issue? And the answer is no. And they do wish to have their items read into the record. During the February 22nd, 2022 City Council meeting, my submitted comment was not read in full. I did not exceed the words allotted on the website for submission of a comment. It is not clear why some people are granted an additional minute and complete, a minute to complete their thought while others are just cut off. This made my comment incomplete and dismissed as if it was not worthy to be heard. This kind of treatment discourages residents in participating in community meetings. What I was attempting, what I was attempting to ask was that the City Council members ensure that all residents are paying fairly into the bucket of money they are collecting to run the city. My request is for our City Council members who represent us as our government officials to research and find a way they can represent all of the people of Northfin by ensuring everyone is paying fairly into the tax pool to run city operations. This starts with collecting data to find out how many residents are paying taxes that are 30, 40, and 50%. Less in taxes, less in taxes based on current home assessment values when compared to residents who purchased their home in the last five or 10 years since real estate prices increased greatly. This is contributing to a city deficit as costs increase and penalizes some residents by charging them far more in tax than other residents with the same house values. Could more transparency provided to the public by showing a five-year and 10-year projection increase of city operations costs and the deficit with current means of tax collections for salaries, benefits, and fleet automobiles for fleets, fire, and parks and recreation, city pool, library expenses, et cetera. Clearly, this deficit problem will continue to get bigger as costs increase. Hemorrhaging financially, some residents more than others based on current means of collecting taxes. It is imperative the inequality of some residents pay far more than other. Residents and taxes and bond measures needs to be ethically adjusted for fairness. Most unfortunately, not only the younger generation or newer homeowners who purchased in the last 10 years are being penalized. The residents who cannot afford a home, who are renters, are financially burdened to pay on their water bill over 300 fees a year to help the city shortfall of money for things that should be covered under property owner taxes. So that is the end of the time, the, the three minutes. I will go ahead and reiterate that even when we read the the message into Zoom, it's timed and so everybody equally gets three minutes. So if the residents wishes to send a separate comment for the next meeting, they may do so if they want to continue those thoughts. So that was the end of the public comment, correct? And I will, and then, but the whole item is submitted for record.
Correct.
Correct.
And each council member was provided with a written.
Thank you. We all have a copy of this too. And Mr. City Administrator, I think we'll take a point of privilege at this moment just because this is a really hot topic right now to remind the citizens who are watching. There are some really great presentations about property taxes. And I was at the one here at the City Council that is on our website. I know it can be very complicated understanding why we as council can't just raise property taxes. And so that is listed on our website. Also, the second presentation, and I believe we even shared it, was from our tax assessor, Steve Jansen, who gave a wonderful presentation at the Wednesday Business, it was a Wednesday Business luncheon for the Chamber of Commerce. And he had some great details trying to break down the property taxes and how they come about. So those are two great resources. This is, I know these are really hard and complicated to understand and I thought they both did a very good job. And our tax assessor in that meeting did say to all the citizens that he is more than happy to sit down and walk through it with anyone. So he has an open door and you can contact him at the county website. So. All right, public comment is over and we are on to number five of the agenda. This is the pump station number five, motor starter replacement. Guys, I covered this in the work session last night. There is a suggested motion on page 10 of your packet. And what is the will of the council on this agenda item? And just for my city recorder here, just as I look through the packet, double checking the page numbers. It's page, it's page nine, not 10. Okay. So page nine is the suggested notion. The staff recommendation after you went through the information during the work session was to use Reese Electric to purchase equipment and install motor restarters, install them.
I'll move that we use Reese Electric to purchase equipment and install more motor starters for approximately $12,000.
Second. Okay, I heard a first from Counselor Gall and a second from Counselor Nordak. Was there any discussion? All in favor of using Reese Electric to purchase the equipment and install the motor starters for the approximate estimate of $12,000, please say aye. Any, any opposed? Motion carries. Next item agenda is number six. This is the Northfin the Northfin Pool Phase Two Rehabilitation Bid, page 12 of the packet. Again, I did listen to the work session last night and I see the, let's see. Now, to our city reporter, just how I'm getting used to the new packet here.
Be on 11.
I made your agenda one page.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 11.
So the suggested motion for this is after the discussion, the work session last night, it sounds like the staff recommendation is to reject the bid from West Coast Contractors and that staff will revisit the scope of the work to move forward. Yes.
Can we have the, say, the administrator for our public sort of summarize?
And we, I was thinking. Should we go ahead and move forward with the motion and then do that during discussion?
I don't care.
Okay. Let's, yes, I, I think that's a great idea. So I'll go ahead and entertain the motion and then we'll have some discussion.
I'll make a motion that we reject the bid, the only bid from West Coast Contractors to allow staff to revisit the scope of work and to move forward.
Okay.
Okay, I heard a first from Counselor Richardson and a second from Counselor Slater to reject the bid from West Coast Contractors and that staff will revisit the scope of work. And just for a point of clarification, this is the rejection of the bid for phase two. For phase two, okay, so. So now there is. So we have a first and a second on the floor. Now we'll go ahead and move to discussion. Thank you, Counselor Slater. I do think it's a good idea to to reiterate for the public of why we're rejecting this bid and, and what that means next for the pool.
Specifically, for phases one, two, and three, we had budgeted approximately.
Specifically for phases one, two, and three, we had budget approximately a million dollars, overall, actually nine hundred and forty thousand. Our first bid came in high, came in about twenty percent over estimated cost of seven hundred and eighty-one thousand. We had budgeted six hundred and twenty-five for that. This project was scoped at approximately a hundred and fifty thousand, which we tried to verify prior to putting it out. It came in at three hundred and twenty-two thousand, so adding those two together were a hundred thousand dollars in the hole to begin with. And also in discussions with the contractors, we were trying for long-term fixes here. I mean, stuff that pool's sixty-six years old at this point. And we were hoping to get another at least fifty years out of some improvements. We think we can re-scope a part of these improvements to maybe a thirty-year life on our improvements and cut our cost and have more in our roughly in our range of the money that we have to spend. Again, there's another budget year ahead. These tasks in phase one and two are tasks that need to be done prior to opening the pool. We have three phases, and the tasks in phase three are essentially projects that can be done when the pool is open and operating, so. Trying to get these out, get the pool open, and we can revisit the next budget year and work through the rest of it. We need to, certain things like painting the bottom of the pool, we can't do that while the pool is operating. Fixing the showers, fixing the hot water and some, there's a couple of really minor but structural defects.
So, city administrator, yes. Well, I was just gonna say, I, so for like lack of better words, it's like if you're remodeling your bathroom and the bid comes in too high, you're like, oh, I'm not getting into Tuesday. We're gonna go back out and like rethink, like what, what are the things that we can do? Because costs are coming in a little bit higher, and it doesn't mean that we're not moving forward with phase two. We just have to kind of retool to make it fit the budget?
That's, that's our intent, and we can, we'll bring back to you some costs on different items, and we'll probably have them approved individually to get, phase one is gonna go into October. Approximately early October, just because the long lead times on the equipment before it's complete. We actually were able to get our boiler sooner than anticipated, which we thought was the longest lead time item. But our pump and our filter system are still gonna push it into October. In, while we're waiting for that equipment to be able to install it, we can do the phase two items. That's our intent. And possibly some of the phase three items, but at this point, the critical items that can only be done when the pool is closed, we're getting out of the way during that period that we're waiting for the equipment, so the recirculation filter and heating system for the pool, which we can't operate without to begin with.
Well, I know you're putting a lot of time into this, staff, everybody. But I'm, I appreciate your effort because we do want to get the pool open, and I know you guys are working hard on that, so thank you.
Right, so, by the way, earlier you, you looked at me and asked for a point of privilege. It's your meeting. It's your meeting, so if you want a point of privilege, that's yours, so. But I, I did want to point out, and I appreciate the kind words, because staff has tirelessly been working on this. And everybody thinks it's so easy, but you also see everyone complaining of, you know, long lines. You know, I, I was at an establishment and literally while I was there, no less than a dozen calls came. And they said, sorry, we're booking into, you know, June, July. There's just, you know, it's, it's an issue. But the point I would bring out, and it's a very important point, because not everybody gets it right when they decide to play armchair quarterback or play social media. And that is, is that there was a five-year levy. That money is protected money. That money, you know, a very small savings, that goes in, from that thing about seventy-five thousand. To the capital. This is a million-dollar-plus project, okay? When the pool opens, that five years' worth of levy is still there. So from the day it opens, that pool operates, even though the levy is to sunset at the five-year mark. It still is budgeted to operate that pool with those funds for five years, and that's a critical point. Those monies can't be used on anything else. They are restricted funds, and they're there. The grants, you know, the Judith and Morgan Foundation grant was huge. When we initially went after the three big items, well, then you had price escalation, and it just kept going further. And so the first round of bids, no one bids, okay, so we lose all that time. Want to realize how much engineering and staff work went in? It's like going to Kaylee and getting like a computer download of what's in her head, and then working with Ralph, our engineer, and outside partners to put together all the good documents. They're pretty extensive. They're online. Anyone can go look at them. But be, be prepared to print an awful lot. So you put them out on the street, nobody bids. We lose all that time. We lost all of the engineering. So we have to punt to the next. We go after the bid the second time. The council recognizes the bids were higher than normal. We've accepted them. Meanwhile, while that's going on, we put out phase two, and we're hoping to get phase two, but as you just heard from staff, the dollars just don't make sense. We're not using the tax dollar money. You know, we have come up with, with federal dollars that have come in here, state dollars, coronavirus dollars, grant dollars, et cetera. That was your commitment to the public, that if they would do the tax levy, you would handle the capital. And it's important that when you're out talking to the public, you reiterate that that five years' worth of money is still there, and it's not going anywhere. And, and none of it gets used until we actually hire the aquatics director, and they start taking over and managing. Because we're managing among ourselves while staff is doing multiple jobs as it is. So I just wanted to make that salient point because it's important. The armchair, you know, as I call them, the keyboard common causeings out there, you know, I love them, okay? But, but, but get it right. That's all we care about. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham, for your hard work on this, and we know that even though the council's gonna be taking some action here in a minute, that, that doesn't mean that the work isn't continuing.
But that's really the, the value of explaining what's going on in this. Staff is working diligently on it. We do recognize the partnership we set up with the levy to run the operations. And our side was to come up with the monies for capital things, put that together, which is a daunting task to say the least, but people are working diligently at it. We understand it. And you ought to know that we are all committed to getting that pool open and having it open for a long time. That's, that's a real value, and Ralph, and I appreciate the insights on that, and you too as well.
Councilor, did you have a comment?
Yes, I, this has not been easy for our staff, and I am just so grateful that Ralph, with decades of experience doing, putting together bid documents and that kind of thing and handling contracts. I'm so grateful that we have experienced staff to, because this, this is it's, it's a real chaotic kind of a process, and I'm just glad that, and I have every confidence.
Thank you, I do too. Alright, well, we have a first, I can't even remember now. We had a first and a second. You got that, city reporter? Okay, we had a first and a second. We had robust conversation. And hopefully people are listening and will share out the facts. So, let's see here, how was that written? Page eleven? All in favor? So all in favor of rejecting the bid from West Coast Contractors for phase two of the pool project? So that staff can revisit the scope of work and move forward, please say aye. We have councillor Gordon online. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. We'll go ahead then and move down. That takes us to number seven, and we have on the agenda here. And that is the North Bend Public Library Skylight Replacements. The work session last night, I saw that we were able to hear from our library director on that. And that was in your packet, so thirteen and fourteen, the staff recommendation. On page thirteen is the approval, the quote from Tom Gioski Construction Inc. in the amount of six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. What is the will of the council?
We used to say, so move. I'll move that we approve the bid from Tom Gioski Construction in the amount of sixty-three fifty to remove and replace two skylights in the library.
Okay, thank you councillor Ball. I had a first, you're a second? Alright, second from councillor Slater. Any discussion? All in favor of the recommended approval of the quote from Tom Gioski Construction Inc. in the amount of six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for the removal of the skylight, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to number eight on the agenda, and this is the purchase of an ice skating rink to promote tourism and e-commerce. I did listen to the work session on that last night. Page sixteen has a recommended motion to authorize the city administrator to purchase synthetic ice rink to promote tourism and foot traffic in our central downtown business district not to exceed seventy-five thousand plus shipping. I can entertain a motion, and then we can move to discussion. Is there, is there a motion from the council?
Yeah, all authors, city administrator, purchase synthetic ice rink to promote tourism and foot traffic in our central downtown business district. Not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars plus shipping.
Okay, first from councillor Richardson, is there a second?
Second.
A second from councillor Nordoff, and some discussion. I'll go ahead and start. I was able to listen to the information last night in the work session. And I just have to say that I really think we are meeting our goals that we set as a council when we first came together. One of the strategic goals that we came up with was to focus on our North Bend businesses and to revitalize our downtown. I think the idea of purchasing the synthetic ring that will last fifteen to twenty years would be something that can do both. I know our city staff has done a lot of research on these types of events and what it can mean for tourism. I also went and reached out to our tourism director for the Oregon Adventure Coast and got some information and data from her as well. So you've probably heard before in different presentations that every time you have a resident come to our town, like they can basically put a dollarhead on approximately how much somebody will spend if they spend one night, or if they spend two nights, or if they're even day shoppers. And one of the information, one of the pieces of information that I got from Janice Longley when we spoke today was there is a lot of data that's coming available with, they call it the mega data, through the cell phone payments. And now they can see how many people come through North Bend, and they even have it blocked off, is what they call the downtown corridor. And then how many people just keep on driving and don't stop to shop in our area and spend money at our cafes and many of our businesses. And in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-one, they were able to pinpoint that they had one point three day visitors that came in. Actually, I believe they also spent the night. So when we look at the strategic projects that we can have in our community to get people, the key is, is to get them out of their cars and to spend time in North Bend. So that they, again, support the businesses in our community, period. And I see this as an opportunity that could do that. Heck, we got the world-class ice sculptor here tonight, too, that you heard it from him, a commitment where we could possibly have some partnership. So anyways, when I've been thinking about all these things, I thought that was really good data from her about the economic impacts of capturing some of the dollars. Of course, I like these activities also for our youth in our community, family-friendly events. It looks like there's some options of, you know, it could be outside with a tent, so you still get some fresh air even during the rainy season. So to me, it's just checking all of the boxes here. So we're meeting our goals. Now, this is another thing that is really important, and we're gonna have to make sure we try to inform the public, but this project, we would not be using property taxes for this project. These are tourism dollars. They call them TLT dollars. So this is money when people come in and they stay in the hotels, just like we, you know, go and we stay somewhere, and maybe in Portland, there's the different taxes on there. Those are those dollars that people are submitting to the community that we then can put right back in to the same, the activities that we want to bring them back so that they spend more money. So, so that's a key piece there. And then the other thing, from my understanding, there is not anything like this on the Oregon coast. So now we've made something, you know, distinctive, where people would come here to our community, and it could be tied into really different types of marketing packages with other things. Sorry, I'm talking so much on this, but I wasn't at the work session last night, so I want to get it all in. Because I just, I really think, again, it's just checking all of those boxes. And so we made ourselves distinctive. We tie this into, wasn't that long ago, where Shore Acres was named one of the top ten places in the world that you must see. And so again, back to the dollarheads of the people who are staying in our community, you make a weekend package out of this. They come in, they do a night at Shore Acres, they spend the next day at our local brew pubs. We've got the brewery that's opening downtown. And then the next thing you know, you have like the ice skating rinks, you bring out the kids that can, that, you know, all the singers from the elementary schools, and you really make a festival out of it. So I know it's complicated to understand because people are like, this doesn't make sense. You don't have enough money for the pool. And so I really urge if anybody wants us to walk through like those different buckets of money and why the tourism dollars can be used for this, but not the pool. I might even actually, I'll, I'll pun here to the city administrator, maybe he can kind of explain why that we're able to use tourism funds for something like an ice skating rink, but not for the, the North Bend Municipal Pool. Do you mind, for the benefit of the citizens, to explain that?
No, I don't mind, but, but a clarification, you, you had said one point three day users. Was there that thousand million?
Oh, I'm sorry. The actual number is one point three visitors that come for the day and spend one night. Because one point three million is how many people came in those three years.
Alright, so. So very much like the pool levy, those are restricted funds. They cannot be used for anything else. And so when we go through the budget season, you're aware that there are certain funds that come into the city that are restricted. They cannot be used. The, the TLT or the transient lodging tax is regulated by state law as to how much you can collect and how it can be used and what it can be used on. A tourist coming here is marketed to fifty miles from the destination. So as the mayor mentioned, you're trying to capture folks coming here and then actually spending money, and they're able to track that. You cannot use the tourism money for the pool unless you want to be real creative, for instance. You could potentially close your visitor information center and move it to the lobby of the pool. And when the visitors come in the RVs, you can let them shower and swim too. And offer a bit of breakfast, maybe. But, but, but that's not a tourism activity, if you will. Tourism is getting them here, getting them out on the dunes. You know, getting them out fishing or crabbing. And so when you look at our downtown, you know, short of, you know, trust me, we're not looking at this. But let's say we put a carousel out there or a ferris wheel over the bay or something like that, something to get them here. Now, once the amenities here for tourism and paid for tourism, as I mentioned, it spreads out over about, you know, fifteen to twenty years. So it's less than five thousand a year, but then you can do the partnerships. You know, you can see, you know, your North Bend, you know, bulldogs coming over on a day trip because it's a public-private partnership. So it's the tourism that are coming and spending, but then you can have the local schools come in and actually do a field trip or things of that nature. So it's the tourism that are coming and spending, but then you can have the local schools come in and actually do a field trip or things of that nature. The other issue is, you know, yes, it is specifically targeted for tourism, it's paid for tourism, but it's also an amenity that's then available to your local residents. Who say, well, what is there to do for the youth? I know it's a family-friendly thing. My wife, when she goes to Times Square, you know, for the holiday, you know. She'd go out on the ice. I mean, she just absolutely loves them. Me, me, one of those skating aids. You're not going to see me skating out there. I, I, I'm six foot five, I'm, I have a fear of falling. So I'm just saying, so you're not going to see me unless I have an aid. And if I have an aid, it's going to be me by myself and no one watching. But I, I used to take our youth group out and we used to hold the rail and I'd do one lap and then I'd sit right back down and take the skates off. So I'm just saying. But I hope that answers your question. You can't use the pool money on, on this. You can't use this money on the pool. You can't use this money on paving or anything else. It has to be very specific. This is your share. So it, it, it's regulated by state law.
Okay, Susan, Councilor Nordoff, did you have any comments?
I think it's definitely worth a try and if it doesn't work, then, you know, we can sell it secondhand. I mean, it's, it's hard stuff that we, we'll, we'll use and just like my, my English saddle, you know, I can sell it. It's not, it's, it still has value, so I think it's a good idea.
What?
Do you have a horse?
I used to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Councilor Slater, do you have any comments?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I think the project itself is an excellent project from the sense of building tourism and building impact in the downtown area. I think as we look at what's going on, you know, we're looking to expand on the viability of downtown for the merchant sake and also for the community sake as well. Getting people in and that, and maybe see the waterfront take off, you know, after that particular piece. But as I look at it, there's a series of those projects set. And there's a limited amount of grants and focus to do that. And you've seen how tough our staff is working, so there's a limited amount of staff time. So for me, this is like project two or three. And for me also, I think project number one ought to be actually relocating the visitor center downs, downtown, building up that area that that works year-round. And people stop by that, that particular thing, we get them rotating through downtown. And we've been shut down for a year and a half.
Yes, yes. In fact, we are opening in April. We, we were just there.
Yesterday.
Yep, I was, I was just yesterday. Okay, we were there yesterday with staff and, and in fact, we showed up as we set off the alarm. And we, we did, we called them, but they still showed up, God bless them. They showed up, is it like, we, we're not sure that you might not be, be held hostage. And, and so you just said that to stop them. But, but, but long story short, we're working with staff, you'll actually see them start to fix up the outside. I, I, I'm going to tell you, they're, they're putting lipstick on a pig. That's the best way I can explain it, that building. And so it will get torn down at some point. And we are still aggressively, you know, through the URA, we're still aggressively trying to acquire that downtown space for and, and, and I know I, I've heard very loud and clear because I, I pitched a couple of things to the URA board that they, they want. You know, it, it's got to be accessible to the larger, it's got to be on the one-on-one order where you can get it very easily. And so we continue to aggressively keep our ear to the ground and still continue to, to involve. The money continues to grow in this account. There is ample money in that account to buy this. And there's still ample money to buy the land and get the visitor center. So that is still solid. We just have to get the movement on the property owners to dance with us.
Yeah, well, right now I appreciate all the work that's going on. I understand the, the end dealing with property owners that way. Like you say, in my particular focus, that's really the number one job that I'd like to see done.
Okay, Councilor Goll, does you have any other comments?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll kind of dovetail in there with Tim, but, that there, yeah, in, in my opinion, I know how much time or I'm, I've got a pretty good guess how much time Ralph and staff has spent on this pool deal. And then to throw in, you know, I'm just saying to throw another project on there. If, if this was two years from now and the pool was running smoothly, yeah, but, but I, and I guess I'm an old-school North Bender because as soon as this thing hit the press, my phone lit up and and everybody was saying, are you, are you kidding me? We're putting in an ice skating rink? And, you know, I didn't even really know how to answer that. So, yeah, that's all I got.
Okay. So do you have any other comments, Councilor Richardson?
Um, just that it's, it's all-inclusive too. The, the rink itself is one thing, but there's going to be all the skates and all the equipment to operate it is included in that price. And I think that, that this will dovetail on the the Shore Acres lights. Because really and truly, the Shore Acres lights, the longest part of that the lights is sitting in line. And before you get there, it doesn't take long to go through it. And then if the people are actually coming here to see those lights, it will give them another opportunity to actually do something with their families. And, you know, my suggestion was the lot between the Mexican restaurant and the Odd Toes building. Because of the fact that it is downtown. And it will promote some, some people actually walking around downtown and, and spending some money. I, I do think it's a good project. I think that it's something unique. I think that we're, you know, we're getting a really good deal on, on the, the pack and it's going to come all the way from Sweden. Been used as a rental one time and I just think it's going to be a really good project, but that's all.
I have a comment.
Yeah, let me put a Councilor Goll, and then back to you, Councilor Nordoff. Councilor Goll, did you have a, a comment?
No, I think it's a good idea. We just need to find a location for it.
We can leave the operations of that piece up to our staff, but I do like hearing some of the suggestions so far. Good, Councilor Nordoff?
Yeah, we heard that, that Umatilla, that was the number one wish on their wish list for the Parks and Recreation Department, their new Parks Master Plan. I grew up in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, which gets three, three to four feet of snow every winter. And my dad would start out building, he would shovel the driveway, but it would all get piled on in one corner against a retaining wall. And then he would dig it out so that we had an igloo for the neighborhood kids. And then he'd hit it with water and it would freeze and it would last for months and it had a little rug door. So I'm, I'm, I grew up on skates. I mean, I'm not a fancy skater, but it's, it's kind of a thrill to, to go ice skating. And, you know, skis, skates, I got, I had that experience as a child. And I think the children in the community are going to be all for this. I think it's going to be a real treat for them to experience. So I'm excited about it.
Well, as I mentioned, what I am really happy about is that it's, it's meeting the strategic goals that we set as a council to revitalize downtown and to encourage business in North Bend. And so it's great when we can go back and review things that we are going to be checking off the boxes of the things that we said that we were going to do. It can't be something for everybody. So I know that there are people that are going to say, I hate ice skating and I wish you put in a wave pool, right? But we, we have to look at the information that we have out there, the data points of the visitors coming in and how this tourism money is supposed to be used. This is exactly how, these are the types of projects that you're supposed to use with this money. So I know that is still probably very confusing. So, you know, we, we are happy to take any emails if people want the information and try to walk through, you know, why we're able to do this and not put that money towards the pool. We can do some things. But again, checking off the boxes and meeting the goals, not using property tax dollars for it, something unique on the Oregon coast. And those are all the reasons why I support it. So we had a first and a second. We had a long, robust discussion and we'll go ahead and go over here to page sixteen to look at the recommended motion. Which is all in favor of the authorization for the city administrator to purchase a synthetic ice rink to promote tourism and foot traffic in our central downtown district business not to exceed seventy-five thousand plus shipping, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have two opposed, the Councilor Slater and Councilor Goll are opposed. Okay, and so I believe that's still the motion carries. Okay, that takes us to number nine on the agenda, which is action, if any, resulting from the executive session. I know that the council met in the executive session last night, but I don't believe there was any action, correct? Okay. And then our city administrators report.
Thank you, very good council. A couple of highlights. I, I don't think that he will be concerned that I'll mention, hopefully he sits up to his wife, but Police Chief Gary McCullough has committed to a full eighteen months, which means that instead of the one-year interim, he'll continue through April twenty twenty-three. And so we are very appreciative of that and very excited for his and the captain's continued leadership here. Staff has moved forward. There was a delay with some of the changeover in Orca, but staff has applied for the community development block grant for five hundred thousand dollars for utility and rental assistance for Coos County. So that is moving forward. House Bill four, one, two, three has been passed by the state legislature. That bill is the coordinated homeless response system. What that does is it awards through contracts, we'll get a contract from the Department of Administrative Services. And North Bend, Coos Bay, Coos County collectively work collaboratively on a strategic plan for homelessness. It comes with a million dollars, half a million in the first year, half a million in the second year. And that's for us to come up with that strategic plan, which means that we have to coordinate with all our partners. And then once the strategic plan is approved and completed, it then allows us to work collaboratively to use the remaining money to implement that plan. The first two of six police SUVs arrived. We were in a budget meeting today and started hearing these weird sirens and I looked up, said, yeah, the new police cars are here because they're out there checking them out. Because they have some really distinct, interesting, unusual sirens. And so we got to hear them. So boys will be boys, they're all out there playing. And the Main Street program, keep in mind in your strategic goals was that we obtain certified local government status, which we have. It also allowed us to elevate within the Main Street program, which then made us eligible to apply for up to two hundred thousand dollars for projects downtown. So we applied for the little theater on the bay for a project for a hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. That was brought before you all to approve when we submitted that. And I got word that there were fewer than anticipated applications, which means that it gives us an even better chance. So that's very positive. I really want to thank the little theater on the bay for all their efforts and cooperative efforts. When I took the opportunity of the grant program, I knew that they were doing phases. And, and they were exactly where we needed them on that phase. And also want to thank CCD Incorporated that they actually put for the grant writer that we collaboratively worked with. And so, you know, on, on a Saturday, I sat here and read every single plan that we have in the city from cover to cover because they needed specific information. And including the, the downtown study that was done in commission in nineteen eighty-three. So, so it's all there. So wish us well on that project. And then last but not least, the city was awarded a fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollar Oregon Heritage Grant for the historic context statement. And so that our city planner will be working with a outside resource on cataloging the future of our historical resources. So yet again, another grant indoor. So that concludes my audio or verbal portion of the city administrator's report. But there is a very, very lengthy report online on our website, also linked off of our Facebook page. And so I encourage everyone to go out and read all of the other great things happening throughout the city and in the various departments.
Thank you. We appreciate you putting those together and putting them out there. Citizens want to know what's happening in the city. These are a great resource to find and then share out so you can share the information. So, thank you. Was there any committee reports this evening? No committee reports. Council comments? We'll go ahead and start with Councilor Goll. Did you have any comments this evening?
Uh, no.
No? Okay, thank you. Councilor Richardson?
Yeah, yesterday at the work session, we had a Kokeal Indian Tribe Chairperson Brett Mead give us a pretty detailed state of the Kokeal River address. I guess that's the way we put it. And the Kokeal River is in dire need of a lot of work from invasive species to water temperature increases to just a, a lot of different things. And one of the scariest things that I saw was in this packet that they actually gave us yesterday is that in two thousand and ten, thirty thousand adult falschenets came to the hatchery. In twenty nineteen, there were two hundred and seventy-five adult shenek came to the hatchery. Like a ninety-nine percent drop. And the people that live around here know that last year there was no fishing on the, the Kokeal River at all for, for, for salmon. And this is a real, real crisis that they have going here. And it's not just the Kokeal River. It's, it's basically all the, all the rivers. You know, along the Oregon coast and I'm sure Washington and California are in the same boat, but you know, between, like I say, the invasive, you know, smallmouth bass that's been introduced, the seals. You know, hatchery production because there just isn't enough hatchery production anymore, plus the wild stock is just way down. And the destruction of habitat, it, it's, it's becoming a real crisis. And if anybody's salmon fishes, everybody knows that last year here in the Coos River system was, was pretty much a disaster also. Very few fish got. And it was just really, really nice to see that Chairperson Mead and the Kokeal Tribe is working with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and, and really working as partners. And being supported by all the cities along, you know, the Kokeal River. And they came to us to give us the report yesterday. But the action needs to be taken and it needs to be taken now instead of later because, I mean, we are facing extinction of the wild shenek in, in the Kokeal system. Actually, I think at three hundred returning pairs this year.
Two seventy-five.
Was it, was it two hundred and seventy-five? And so they're, they're, they're working on the food stock. They purchased some property, I think, down on Lampa.
Lampa Road, yeah.
And there, that is, that is key for, you know, introducing these smalls back into the system. But it's going to take a lot of work, a lot of hard year time. It's just really, really, you know, you know, I understood it, but I didn't understand it to the extent that, that it takes. And hopefully with the state and, you know, the tribe working together, they can actually get something done in, in, in a reasonable amount of time. And they'll save the species because it's, it's, it's a crisis. So that's really all I have.
Okay, Councilor Goll?
Yeah, just to dovetail on to Bill's deal, I, I, I got some other items, but Bill hit that right on the head and, and I really believe Yeah, and just to dovetail on the Bill's deal, I, I, I got some other items, but Bill hit that right on the head and, and I really believe that. Uh, the tribe is going to and needs to take the lead role in that deal. The Department of Fish and Wildlife, you know, they're just uh. Yeah, they're just not uh, not, not doing what, you know, needs to happen to save these. I mean, she even admitted, I mean, it's just about, you know, a couple more years and you're talking extinction, you know, so, yeah. But anyway, she, she did give us a great uh, uh, program there. I did, when I got here tonight, I get, I usually always get here early and I, I went down and luckily I didn't set the alarm off on them cop cars, but. I checked those cop cars out pretty quick and there, there's a lot of stuff happening in one of them cop cars. Yeah, so uh, very good. Uh, I think with Gary staying here, I, I. I mean, I'm totally tickled with public safety. I made a quick stop to the fire hall tonight or this morning. And those fire guys are so professional and they, you know, it's just, we're really lucky to have what we got going there. So uh, between the cops and the firemen, yeah, it's, it's great. You know, we did lose one of our old uh. Fire engineers, Jim Bush. Uh, I remember when he came to work there, I was in the department then and. And uh, yeah, i- it's, it's always bad to see somebody have to go, but sometimes you got to. And then Saturday night, uh, and Larry, Larry helped too, but. And we're both on the BASSA board, various sportsman's association board. Uh, I didn't realize when somebody said their knees hurt, I didn't realize how bad my knees hurted after. Uh, all day Friday setting up at Soya, all day Saturday setting up at Soya. Then I ran this uh, Wheel of Fortune deal for the banquet itself and, and I, I'll tell you. Um, I'm sixty-three and I felt like I was eighty-three. Uh, but it was a really good event. Uh, people obviously didn't needed to get out, out on the town. Uh, we had roughly over short, a small amount of, over five hundred people there and, and. And honestly, thank God for the, the things that BASSA helps in this area. Trust me, all that money, I, I was involved in Ducks Unlimited for years, so was Ralph. You know, that, you couldn't get done with your banquet quick enough and you had to send your money off and you never seen it again. This BASSA money stays right here for just about anything you think of, uh, sportsman's wise or. You know, if uh, somebody needs something, you know, you put into, and and we basically give it all away. So uh. Uh, very good event and uh, I was proud to be part of it. Yeah, that's all I got.
Counselor Nora?
Um, want to congratulate Brian Owen on his retirement. He's made a, a huge contribution to the parks in our city. Uh, very hands-on, very good judgment in a lot, in a lot of ways and very encouraging of his staff and. Of the Eagle Scout projects. There was an Eagle Scout project to build a bluff trail around overlooking Pony Slough. I walked that today to go over and check out Madden Richardson's latest Eagle Scout project, which is the picnic table. Complete with a bridge railing. I was stunned to see that. It's really great application of a bridge railing. Uh, with lovely boulders around it and two benches that are just awesome. They, they look handmade for sure. Um, and I noticed that there were some real big limbs off trees that I think that big windstorm that kept everybody awake about two months ago. That, that puts some real big timber branches down, you know, like the two-foot variety. Um, anyway, I'm just delighted to see Madden's contribution and I congratulate him on the Sequel Scout.
Counselor Slater?
Yeah, I, I dovetail on the Eagle Scout part. You know, we saw the project which went on and and what happened. The, the basis of the project, first of all, he has to construct it, put it together. Uh, getting the money, getting the work, getting the thing that's of value and, and uh. Sort of sell that to the Eagle Review Board as a suitable project. And when it's accepted, then they go out and do it. And one of the baselines in that is, uh, if you were not there, would it happen? You know, so it's, it's really an initiative-based thing in many different assets to get done. Having said that, there's a long route to get to that particular spot. Eagle Scout is, I believe, it's still twenty-one merit matters you have to do. And the merit matters are uh, a specific issue item talent or whatever. And about two-thirds of them are specified as required. And the other ones are uh. Uh, electives as to what you would like to do and what to be part of. And also, one of the biggest aspects of this is you're, you're working on building leaders. Uh, you find out how to work together with each other, how to lead the patrol, how to maybe lead the company going together. If you have summer hikes, you know, the week-long or two weeks long. You have to plan out where you're going to be and where you're going to stop and how the food's going to be and what's going to go on. And it was a tremendous um, team-building, leadership-based thing. And then the culmination is after, then all the academics and those say. Let me come up with a project that's of value and will only happen if I'm the one to initiate it. So it's a, it's quite an accomplishment that way. Uh, I too was interested in the uh, presentation that Chairman Mead uh, came up with yesterday. Uh, they are doing fantastic things uh, on the uh, Kokeel, Kokeel River. On especially addressing the vast issues that is to take the time to get rid of in that way. Are there any other things that can be even of equal or greater significance? They're working on uh, acquiring the Coos Bay Wetman Road land to be able to manage the timber. And uh, in the habitats that threw out there and, and the way that the Native American Planning Acts in that are. Uh, they can harvest and regenerate and use and actually generate not only the five different. Values, you know, like recreation, clean air, habitat and so forth and economics, but uh. They can, they can also get out and do it principally because their uh, appeals process is uh. A little bit or quite a bit different than from the national forest. So it's a great opportunity. And that said, and if you've ever had the chance to uh. Go on any of their current forest lands, you'll be impressed with the quality of both habitat uh, aspect and uh. And the forest that they're creating now. And and I like the little thing I did for Brian to uh, uh, put in some groundwork around. He, he doesn't waste much time chewing and talking and whatever, uh, he's out there doing things and making them happen that way. If, if in fact, uh, and it doesn't matter what level of operation, he will always make sure it goes down and get out there. So, uh, another one for many long-term employees who are.
Um, all right. Um, so I was traveling yesterday and I wasn't able to attend the work session, but I was able to watch it. This morning and um, I didn't want to make a comment that I was a bit disappointed to hear the council. Discussing or suggesting that there wasn't a hundred percent transparency um, over. Um, some of the information that came out about the ice skating rink because there was three emails sent prior. Um, and I hate, I hate to use that term like drinking from a fire hose. Um, but I know it does feel like that sometimes as a counselor and a mayor. Um, that is so much information coming at us and we're all trying to do the best that we can. Um, I can't make people sit down and read their email, but I fully um. Support the staff and the information that they send out and I actually am a fan of send more than less. Because I would, I want to be able to go back and refer to that and it does take me a while to get through that information. Um, and if anybody's watching at home and would like to be a part of the council, it's more than just showing up on Monday and Tuesday nights. It's a lot of reading information. So I know there could be something where maybe somebody missed an email or it went to the wrong box. But I just want to put that out there and on the record that I thank you for sending as much information as you can. And I know at times that um, it's hard and, but the staff has always been open to the counselors about phone calls and receiving information. So um, I appreciate that you do that and I will continue to try to read as fast as I can. Maybe we should all take speed reading classes. Um, but I do appreciate the um, the transparency, um, the city administrator's report. And the meeting string on um, YouTube and Facebook and all of the places. If um, citizens want to learn about anything from property taxes, as I suggested before. Um, to um, pump station number five with Mr. Ralph Dunham, you can find that information. So you just got to go find it. You got to go look for the facts and not just what's out there on somebody's soundbite of something. So. Um, on a lighter note though, um, there is a lot to celebrate. We have Brian Owen's retirement. Um, I'm, I'm elated to hear that um, Chief McCullough is going to um, have a longer interim than the originally planned. We even have Sergeant Buddy Young coming back to help out. So um, public safety is strong. We've got the new um, fire vehicles. Um, um, coming in and all, all of those things. So um, I also want to let you know that last week I attended, um. I was invited by the national, to the, okay, so I was invited by the um, Oregon League of Cities. To go to the National League of Cities Congressional Conference as a scholarship, so no cost to the taxpayers. And represent um, our community. Um, they specifically invited me because they wanted a voice from Oregon. Um, so uh, me and also uh, the mayor of Chilquin, who um, has a, I think their population might be about seven hundred or so. Um, uh, came and it's a little interesting tidbit out there that I had heard, um, one of the speakers say. Is that you have this room full of mayors and counselors and um, we uh, we represent eighty-five percent of the cities in the United States. Eighty-five percent of the cities in the United States are under fifty thousand. Um, so they wanted to hear from us. We were addressed by President Biden, um, also Speaker of the House Nancy Pelosi. Um, I, I did my best to get like a selfie with them, might have succeeded. Um, and uh, we, it was, it was really great to hear from our nation's leaders um, on all of those things. I also was able to introduce Ron Wyden and Senator Ron Wyden to the Oregon delegates. And I came in the conference and the most proud moment is I was able to thank Ron Wyden and Senator Merkley. Um, personally for the appropriations bill, um, for the money that we're using for our sewer and water infrastructure. And out of the entire nation, a hundred and forty cities, do they get that right? Uh, there's a hundred and forty projects for this appropriations bill. So I was able to shake their hand, say thank you and um, from the bottom of our heart, from all of the counselors and the city of North Bend. We need that money for the infrastructure in our city. Um, so that was pretty great too. And. That is about it. That is all that I have. Or any other business?
Uh, no ma'am, just a reminder to the uh, Mayor Council that I will be on vacation starting Thursday morning. Uh, the uh, Police Chief for our uh, emergency management uh, protocols and ordinance and directives will be. Uh, he's the coordinator, so he is in charge by and by, unless he opts to delegate it. Um, he is, he, he is threatened to do, so uh, but for now, the uh, Police Chief uh. Uh, will be in charge. Uh, he's normally here, but they are working a case tonight. Um, and so uh, it has consumed uh, uh, North Bend's finest.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Have a great vacation, well deserved, and meeting adjourned.